All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Arcadia Unified School District Board of Education Meeting on February 11th, 2025. It is 7:04 PM and I am calling this meeting to order, which is being recorded and livestreamed on YouTube and can be accessed at boardmeeting.ausd.net. Okay, roll call, all our board members are present, including the Executive Cabinet, and we have our Pledge of Legions by Mrs. Yee.
I'll stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mrs. Yee, inspiration as well?
I do, thank you. So, as we will be celebrating President's Day this coming Monday, I thought this was the perfect time to remember that we're not just celebrating those who've led our country, but we're reflecting on what leadership truly means. Leadership is not just about the people in power, it's not just about the policies they create. Leadership is about us and about what we do and what we say and how we choose to shape the world around us. Too often, we think of leadership as something reserved for presidents and politicians and CEOs, but leadership doesn't require a title, it is about action, it's about standing up for what's right, even when it's hard, and it's about speaking up when something feels unjust, and it's about taking responsibility, not just for ourselves, but for the people around us. I'm proud to be a part of this Arcadia Unified Community where we see great leadership every day. Just today, we saw leadership at the Arcadia Council PTA Honorary Awards, which included the great leadership of our AUSD maintenance team, so congratulations to them for getting the honorary service award. It was well deserved. We also saw leadership in the students who went to the Legislative Conference in Sacramento to advocate for their fellow students. And we saw leadership in our AUSD community in helping those affected by devastating fires. And at the not the least, we see leadership every day in students who help their fellow students, even when no one is watching. So, leadership is found in everyday moments and everyday people, and if we want change, we can't wait for someone else to make it happen, we have to be the ones to step in. So, as we celebrate President's Day, let's not just reflect on the leaders of the past, let's think about the leaders we need today, and let's recognize that leadership is not just in the hands of a few, but it belongs to all of us, and that is my inspiration for tonight.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Yee, looking forward to recognizing some leaders here tonight as well.
Yeah.
I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Vargo, second by Mrs. Chavez, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Report out taken in closed session, no action was taken in closed session. We are to our student representative, Miss Ben.
Hi, my name is Elena Lee, and I'm the senior class historian.
Hi, my name is Samantha Tong, and I'm the senior class vice president. This is our board report. The planning process for ASP spring elections has begun. In celebration of Valentine's Day, the annual Carnation Grams fundraiser will be delivered in fourth-period classrooms on February 14th. The sixth ICC meeting took place on February 10th, where clubs prepared for club takeovers, a chance to showcase their activities in the second semester. EDI is in the midst of planning Diversity Week, where different cultures will be highlighted on campus with various lunch and school activities. Link Crew held its Beard Papa's Cream Puffs fundraiser on February 7th. Later that day, Link Crew also held its Valentine's Day movie night, Love Link Crew.
Arcadia Science Olympia team hosted their first Peacock satellite invitational lasting from February 1st to February 8th. On February 3rd, Constitution team placed second in We the People California State Finals. On February 8th, Science Bowl placed fifth in the Hunter Science Bowl Invitational. On February 5th, girls soccer won their game against Christina Valley with the final score of 4-2, securing their third consecutive Pacific League championship title. Their next game will be in the CIF playoffs. Additionally, the seasons for girls water polo, girls basketball, and boys soccer have officially concluded. The winter pep assembly was held in the North Gym on January 24th. There were performances from band, pep, and cheer, spring sports and academic team introductions, as well as fun audience games.
Senior council is planning a joint restaurant fundraiser with Panda Express and Crumble Cookie, which will take place on February 27th. They are also planning a spring-themed bonding event, Spring It On, which will take place March 28th. Junior council is planning an all-school bonding event named Spring Swaray, scheduled to be hosted on March 14th. Additionally, they are finalizing a Krispy Kreme class fundraiser to be held from March 17th to March 21st. Sophomore council has finalized the Valentine's Day lunch event, which includes free fruit punch, DIY pipe cleaner flowers, and heart resolutions. The freshman council has finalized their Yogurtland fundraiser, which will occur on February 27th. They are also planning their first spawning event of the semester, happening on March 7th, and that concludes the board report.
Thank you, Ms. Ben and students, appreciate the report. We are to audience comments, of which we have no audience comments tonight. Which brings us to action items. Action item A, presentation by Vice Chairperson of Citizens Measure A Oversight Committee and acceptance of the committee's 2023-2024 Annual Report, Mr. Esler.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome up to the podium the Chair of our Measure A Citizens Oversight Committee, Mr. Matthias Huber, and also one of our members, our very own, Mr. Tim Rehn, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Arcadia Unified School District Board of Education Meeting on February 11th, 2025. It is 7:04 PM and I am calling this meeting to order, which is being recorded and livestreamed on YouTube and can be accessed at boardmeeting.ausd.net. Okay, roll call, all our board members are present, including the Executive Cabinet, and we have our Pledge of Legions by Mrs. Yee.
I'll stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mrs. Yee, inspiration as well?
I do, thank you. So, as we will be celebrating President's Day this coming Monday, I thought this was the perfect time to remember that we're not just celebrating those who've led our country, but we're reflecting on what leadership truly means. Leadership is not just about the people in power, it's not just about the policies they create. Leadership is about us and about what we do and what we say and how we choose to shape the world around us. Too often, we think of leadership as something reserved for presidents and politicians and CEOs, but leadership doesn't require a title, it is about action, it's about standing up for what's right, even when it's hard, and it's about speaking up when something feels unjust, and it's about taking responsibility, not just for ourselves, but for the people around us. I'm proud to be a part of this Arcadia Unified Community where we see great leadership every day. Just today, we saw leadership at the Arcadia Council PTA Honorary Awards, which included the great leadership of our AUSD maintenance team, so congratulations to them for getting the honorary service award. It was well deserved. We also saw leadership in the students who went to the Legislative Conference in Sacramento to advocate for their fellow students. And we saw leadership in our AUSD community in helping those affected by devastating fires. And at the not the least, we see leadership every day in students who help their fellow students, even when no one is watching. So, leadership is found in everyday moments and everyday people, and if we want change, we can't wait for someone else to make it happen, we have to be the ones to step in. So, as we celebrate President's Day, let's not just reflect on the leaders of the past, let's think about the leaders we need today, and let's recognize that leadership is not just in the hands of a few, but it belongs to all of us, and that is my inspiration for tonight.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Yee, looking forward to recognizing some leaders here tonight as well.
Yeah.
I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Vargo, second by Mrs. Chavez, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Report out taken in closed session, no action was taken in closed session. We are to our student representative, Miss Ben.
Hi, my name is Elena Lee, and I'm the senior class historian.
Hi, my name is Samantha Tong, and I'm the senior class vice president. This is our board report. The planning process for ASP spring elections has begun. In celebration of Valentine's Day, the annual Carnation Grams fundraiser will be delivered in fourth-period classrooms on February 14th. The sixth ICC meeting took place on February 10th, where clubs prepared for club takeovers, a chance to showcase their activities in the second semester. EDI is in the midst of planning Diversity Week, where different cultures will be highlighted on campus with various lunch and school activities. Link Crew held its Beard Papa's Cream Puffs fundraiser on February 7th. Later that day, Link Crew also held its Valentine's Day movie night, Love Link Crew.
Arcadia Science Olympia team hosted their first Peacock satellite invitational lasting from February 1st to February 8th. On February 3rd, Constitution team placed second in We the People California State Finals. On February 8th, Science Bowl placed fifth in the Hunter Science Bowl Invitational. On February 5th, girls soccer won their game against Christina Valley with the final score of 4-2, securing their third consecutive Pacific League championship title. Their next game will be in the CIF playoffs. Additionally, the seasons for girls water polo, girls basketball, and boys soccer have officially concluded. The winter pep assembly was held in the North Gym on January 24th. There were performances from band, pep, and cheer, spring sports and academic team introductions, as well as fun audience games.
Senior council is planning a joint restaurant fundraiser with Panda Express and Crumble Cookie, which will take place on February 27th. They are also planning a spring-themed bonding event, Spring It On, which will take place March 28th. Junior council is planning an all-school bonding event named Spring Swaray, scheduled to be hosted on March 14th. Additionally, they are finalizing a Krispy Kreme class fundraiser to be held from March 17th to March 21st. Sophomore council has finalized the Valentine's Day lunch event, which includes free fruit punch, DIY pipe cleaner flowers, and heart resolutions. The freshman council has finalized their Yogurtland fundraiser, which will occur on February 27th. They are also planning their first spawning event of the semester, happening on March 7th, and that concludes the board report.
Thank you, Ms. Ben and students, appreciate the report. We are to audience comments, of which we have no audience comments tonight. Which brings us to action items. Action item A, presentation by Vice Chairperson of Citizens Measure A Oversight Committee and acceptance of the committee's 2023-2024 Annual Report, Mr. Esler.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome up to the podium the Chair of our Measure A Citizens Oversight Committee, Mr. Matthias Huber, and also one of our members, our very own, Mr. Tim Rehn, welcome.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. So, my name is Matthias Huber, and I'm the Vice Chair, actually, of the 2023-2024 Citizens Measure A Oversight Committee. The chair actually is sitting in front here. I am here tonight to report on behalf of this committee. The committee members are myself, Sharon Von Kirk, Tim Rehn, Anthony Leong, Jennifer Vargo, and Calvin Lin. It is the duty of the committee to ensure that the proceeds from the 2012 and 2017 voter-approved parcel taxes are spent as intended. The committee had met three times in the 2023-2024 year to review income and expenses and determine the funds were spent as required. In addition, the independent accounting firm Negro Negro PC completed its annual audit as of June 30th, 2024, and certified that the Arcadia Unified School District complied with the requirements. Total parcel tax revenue collected in 2023-2024 was $4,445,545. The total expenditure in 2023-2024 was $5,275,064 and was used to fund salaries and benefits for 28 teachers and three counselors. This past year, expenditures exceeded income by about $830,000. This difference was drawn from the fund balance, which has been built up from the excess income collected during the preceding years of this parcel tax. This trend of expenses exceeding revenues was anticipated and is expected to continue. It is further reported that the efforts of the Citizens Measure A Oversight Committee in collaboration with district staff resulted in the transfer of about $217,000 to the parcel tax program from interest earned during prior years. In addition, the Arcadia Unified School District was able to contribute approximately $1.68 million in one-time funds to the parcel tax. This resulted in an increase of the parcel tax fund by about $1,515,000. So, as of June 30th, 2024, the ending fund balance was about $4,216,000, which is available for future use towards the authorized purposes. The Measure A Oversight Committee will continue its work with our next committee meeting, scheduled for June 2nd, 2025. The citizen members of the 2024 Committee are myself, Scott Baer, Anthony Leong, Steve Re, and Tim Re, who's with me here, Sharon Von Kirk, and Jason Wong. Thank you for allowing us to give this report tonight.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, the motion for this item, please.
I'll move to approve the Citizens Measure A Oversight Committee's Annual Report for the 2023-2024. Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Yee, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rehn. Any comments from the board or Miss Ben?
Just thank you, as a past Measure A Oversight person, thanks for the work and for taking the time.
Yeah, the entire community is very thankful, I mean, this is a thankless job, but we are, this is the one time we get to thank.
Say thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I will call for a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 5-0, thank you again. And now, we are to Item B, presentation by Chairperson of Measure I, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and acceptance of the committee's 2023-2024 Annual Report. Back to you, Mr. Esler.
Yes, thank you. The Chairperson for Measure I is Mr. Paul Angle. He is out of town on business, but he very graciously pre-recorded a video, so we'll break from tradition and pause for a moment to watch his video. And before we start it, I know Scott's already ready, but before he starts it, I just want to thank Mr. Angle and all the other members of the Oversight Committee from last year, 2023-24, I'll just name them real quick. Stanley Poon, Susan Lawie, Sonia Martin, Jennifer Ledesma, Ailei Gardaia, Scott Harris, Joyce Platt, and Tim Snyder, thank you to all of them. Which included the great leadership of our AUSD maintenance team. So congratulations to them for getting the honorary service award. It was well deserved. We also saw leadership in the students we went, who went to the legislative conference in Sacramento. To advocate for their fellow students. And we saw leadership in our AUSD community and helping those affected by devastating fires. And at the not the least, we see leadership every day in students who help their fellow students, even when no one is watching. So leadership is found in everyday moments and everyday people. And if we want change, we can't wait for someone else to make it happen. We have to be the ones to step in. So as we celebrate Presidents' Day, let's not just reflect on the leaders of the past. Let's think about the leaders we need today. And let's recognize that leadership is not just in the hands of a few, but it belongs to all of us. And that is my inspiration for tonight.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Yee. Looking forward to recognizing some leaders here tonight as well.
Yeah.
Uh, I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Vargo, second by Mrs. Chavez. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Uh, report out taken in closed session, no action was taken in closed session. We are to our student representative report, Ms. Ben.
Hi, my name is Elena Lee and I'm the senior class historian.
Hi, my name is Samantha Tong and I'm the senior class vice president. This is our board report. The planning process for ASB spring elections has begun. In celebration of Valentine's Day, the annual Carnation Grams fundraiser will be delivered in fourth period classrooms on February fourteenth. The sixth ICC meeting took place on February tenth, where clubs prepared for club takeovers. A chance to showcase their activities in the second semester. EDI is in the midst of Planning Diversity Week, where different cultures will be highlighted on campus with various lunch and school activities. Link Crew held its Beard Papa's Cream Puffs fundraiser on February seventh. Later that day, Link Crew also held its Valentine's Day movie night, Love Link Crew.
Arcadia Science Olympia team hosted their first Peacock Satellite Invitational lasting from February first to February eighth. On February third, Constitution team placed second in We the People California State Finals. On February eighth, Science Bowl placed fifth in the Hunter Science Bowl Invitational. On February fifth, girls soccer won their game against Christina Valley with the final score of four to two. Securing their third consecutive Pacific League championship title. Their next game will be in the CIF playoffs. Additionally, the seasons for girls water polo, girls basketball, and boys soccer have officially concluded. The winter pep assembly was held in the north gym on January twenty-fourth. There were performances from band, pep, and cheer, spring sports and academic team introductions, as well as fun audience games.
Senior council is planning a joint restaurant fundraiser with Panda Express and Crumble Cookie, which would take place on February twenty-seventh. They are also planning a spring themed bonding event, Spring It On, which will take place March twenty-eighth. Junior council is planning an all-school bonding event named Spring Sora, scheduled to be hosted on March fourteenth. Additionally, they are finalizing a crispy cream class fundraiser to be held from March seventeenth to March twenty-first. Sophomore council has finalized the Valentine's Day lunch event, which includes free fruit punch, DIY pipe cleaner flowers, and heart resolutions. The freshman council has finalized their Yogurtland fundraiser, which will occur on February twenty-seventh. They are also planning their first spawning event of the semester, happening on March seventh. And that concludes the board report.
Thank you, Ms. Ben and students. Appreciate the report. We are to audience comments, of which we have no audience comments tonight. Which brings us to action items. Action item A, presentation by Vice Chairperson of Citizens Measure A Oversight Committee. And acceptance of the committee's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual report. Mr. Esler.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Uh, I would like to welcome up to the podium the Chair of our Measure A Citizens Oversight Committee, Mr. Matthias Huber. And also one of our members, our very own, Mr. Tim Reen. Welcome.
Yeah, good, good evening, everybody. So my name is Matthias Huber and I'm the Vice Chair, actually, of the twenty-three, twenty-four Citizens Measure A Oversight Committee. The Chair actually is sitting in front here. I am here tonight to report on behalf of this committee. The committee members are myself, Sharon Von Kirk, Tim Re, Anthony Leong, Jennifer Vargo, and Calvin Lin. It is the duty of the committee to ensure that the proceeds from the twenty-twelve and twenty-seventeen voter approved parcel taxes are spent as intended. The committee had met three times in the twenty-three, twenty-four year to review income and expenses. And determine the funds were spent as required. In addition, the independent accounting firm Negro Negro PC completed its annual audit as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And certified that the Arcadia Unified School District complied with the requirements. Total parcel tax revenue collected in twenty-three, twenty-four was four million four hundred forty-five thousand five hundred forty-five. The total expenditure in twenty-three, twenty-four was five million two hundred seventy-five thousand sixty-four. And was used to fund salaries and benefits for twenty-eight teachers and three counselors. This past year expenditures exceeded income by about eight hundred thirty thousand dollars. This difference was drawn from the fund balance, which has been built up from the excess income collected during the preceding years of this parcel tax. This trend of expenses exceeding revenues was anticipated and is expected to continue. It is further reported that the efforts of the Citizen Measure A Oversight Committee, in collaboration with district staff. Resulted in the transfer of about two hundred seventeen thousand dollars to the parcel tax program from interest earned during prior years. In addition, the Arcadia Unified School District was able to contribute approximately one point six to eight million dollars in one-time funds to the parcel tax. This resulted in an increase of the parcel tax fund by about one million fifteen thousand dollars. So as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, the ending fund balance was about four million two hundred sixteen thousand dollars. Which is available for future use towards the authorized purposes. The Measure A Oversight Committee will continue its work with our next committee meeting scheduled for June second, twenty twenty-five. The citizen members of the twenty-four, twenty-five committee are myself, Scott Bear, Anthony Leong, Steve Free, and Tim Re. Who's with me here, Sharon Von Kirk and Jason Wong. Uh, thank you for allowing us to give this report tonight.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay. The motion for this item, please.
I'll move to approve the Citizens Measure A Oversight Committee's annual report for the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mrs. Yee. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Reen. Uh, any comments from the board? Or Ms. Ben?
Just thank you. As a past Measure A Oversight person. Thanks for the work and for taking the time.
Yeah, the entire community is very thankful. I mean, this is a thankless job, but we are, this is the one time we get to thank.
Say thank you.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Okay, um, I will call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you again. And now we are to item B, presentation by Chairperson of Measure I. Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and acceptance of the committee's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual report. Back to you, Mr. Esler.
Yes, thank you. Uh, the Chairperson for Measure I is Mr. Paul Angle. He is out of town on business, but he very graciously pre-recorded a video. So we'll break from tradition and pause for a moment to watch his video. And before we start it, I know Scott's already ready, but before he starts it, I just want to thank Mr. Angle and all the other members of the Oversight Committee from last year, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. I'll just name them real quick. Stanley Poon, Susan Lawie, Sonia Martin, Jennifer Ledesma, Ailee Gardaia, Scott Harris, Joyce Platt, and Tim Snyder. Thank you to all of them.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paul Angle and I am the Chairperson for the Measure I Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Proud to serve Arcadia Unified School District and the Board of Directors who are meeting tonight. I apologize for the recording. I am currently on a road trip, a work trip to Champaign, Illinois, where UCLA is playing Illinois in basketball on Tuesday, February eleventh. Proud to give you this year's report for twenty-three, twenty-four. And before I proceed, I just want to acknowledge the various members of the board, very good-looking board, volunteer board. Stanley, Susan, Sonia, Jennifer, Ailee, Scott, Joyce, and Timothy, thank you for your service. For the group at large, we have two major improvements to the Unified School District this year that we're very proud of. Uh, the first major improvements took place at Longley Way, whereby shade structures were put in at Longley Way. To provide safety, security, and shade for the students, teachers, and staff there. Bonus for parents, they get to save on some sunscreen, so that's always a big win. Uh, perhaps most importantly, the modular building that you see behind me at Holly Avenue is the major project that we oversaw. From a public perspective during twenty-three, twenty-four, that stands proudly here again at Holly Avenue. Not only is it home for Mrs. Angle, the lovely librarian who works here. But the students, the faculty, the staff, and the greater community at large are able to utilize this building to learn and grow and read. And enjoy their experience at Holly Avenue. If you may remember, in November of two thousand and six, Arcadia residents passed the Measure I bond, which raised two hundred eighteen million dollars for school repairs and modernization. All of the schools in our school district have received benefits of those monies in every classroom. Due to the savings and the man, and the management of those funds. Uh, there were leftovers that were set aside for future projects like this, like the projects at Longley Way. And perhaps more importantly, most importantly, this building that you see behind me. Occupancy of the Holly Avenue Elementary School modular building took place in the winter break of twenty twenty-three. And in addition, the play structures I mentioned that you see or can see at Longley Way. Uh, provide shade and new playground surfacing to be continued to be installed at every. And in addition, the play structures I mentioned that you see or can see at Longley Way. Uh, provide shade and new playground surfacing to be continued to be installed at every.
One more try?
This is what it feels like in the classroom when the wifi dies.
This is why we all voted for Measure AS.
Absolutely.
Last, last try.
I mean, I think we get the idea.
Yeah, he got through most of that.
I was read the written reports.
Yeah, that's included in the agenda.
Uh, anything else to add, Mr. Esler?
Uh, no, just that, um, uh, as of, I think, last month at the board meeting. It's now a consolidated Oversight Committee for the bond. Both Measure, uh, sorry, Measure I and Measure AS. And once all the bond funds for Measure I are fully spent, then it just becomes an AS Oversight Committee. So it'll be the same group of people that are continuing to review our expenditures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Esler. Thank you, Mr. Angle. Okay, I need a motion for this item, please.
Um, I moved that we approve the Measure I Citizens Bond Oversight Committee annual report for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thank you, Mrs. Chavez.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Vargo. Um, any comments from the board or student rep?
Just another thank you to, yeah, to the whole committee for all the work and time.
Indeed, thank you. All right, I will call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item C, memorandum of understanding between the Arcadia Unified School District and California School Employees Association.
Thank you. So this is the, uh, uh, last of the three MOUs from our associations. To, uh, be responsive to the catastrophic losses that some of our employees endured during the county fires here in Los Angeles County. And basically, this MOU is a reminder, it provides up to ten district-funded days for employees. Uh, who are either displaced in a prolonged manner or lost their homes. Uh, they can use those ten days to, um, hopefully assist with, uh, a lot of the unexpected things that need to happen as a result. Uh, it also expand the PN use from ten days to whatever their full bank of leave, uh, is. And also creates a, uh, donation bank where employees can donate days for employees to use out of that bank. I just want to thank CSCA. They, just like our other unions, ATA and APS, have moved very quickly to get this MOU in place. And, um, I just really appreciate, um, their, their willingness to move forward and being such great partners at such a time of crisis. So, so with that said, uh, we recommend approval of this MOU.
Any questions for Dr. Hirsch? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I move to, um, pass the memorandum of expanding between Arcadia Unified School District and California School Employees Association regarding the Los Angeles County fires.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Ms. Reen, second by Mrs. Chavez. Comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item D, resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-three, hundred eighty-day waiting period waiver for retired and new tenants. Dr. Hirsch?
Thank you. It's actually with a heavy heart that we bring this matter forward. As you are all aware, we had an unexpected loss, a school office supervisor at Highland Oaks School, which has, uh, really impacted the district and the school community. Uh, and with that, uh, we know that these office supervisor positions are incredibly skilled positions. And, uh, so, uh, we, uh, acted quickly to be able to get a retiree, uh, Maitan into this position to assist us in the interim as we fly this position. And so this is actually required because there's an eighty-day waiting period when you retire, where you can no longer work in a, uh, position that would be a, a, a Cowal Per's position. And so, um, by taking this action, it allows us to be able to cover the needs that we need to, in our efforts to support Highland Oaks. So with that, we recommend approval of this resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Hirsch. Any questions from the board? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I'll move to approve, uh, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five dash twenty-three, hundred eighty-day wait period exception.
Thank you, Mrs. Yee. Can I get a second? Thank you, Ms. Reen. Any comments?
Just our deepest condolences to the Highland Oaks community and to her family.
Thank you. And, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes five zero. Item E. Appointment of Director of C I and A Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Thank you. Dr. Hirsch?
All right. Well, with the, uh, uh, retirement of Daniel Hacking at the end of this year, that created a vacancy, uh, in the position of Director of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction. Uh, in education services. And so we are very excited to recommend, uh, in the appointment, our own, uh, Dr. Angela Dilman. And with that, I will turn it over to Brent to, uh, have a few words of introduction.
A few words, I won't, I won't share everything, Angie. But it, um, it's thrilling, um, to be able to recommend Angie, someone who, when I came to Arcadia, was a teacher at Arcadia High School. Um, became the ASB Director, uh, became Assistant Principal, and then flew the coop, so to speak. And left us. Um, but again, that, that, that is very, um, descriptive of Angie. She is smart, she's very loyal, and yet she will take risks, which is what we want in, in somebody in these leadership positions. And so, um, I'm thrilled, we are thrilled to recommend someone of Angie's caliber that is essentially homegrown here in Arcadia. And to be able to keep that kind of talent here with us in Arcadia. It's an amazing opportunity and sometimes, uh, timing is, is better, uh, than not. And so with Daniel's retirement and this opportunity, um, and Angie is clearly ready, uh, to take the next step in her career. And could not be happier or thrilled to invite her to, to, to add to her team in Ed Services. So with that, we'd like to recommend Angela Dilman as the next Director of CIA.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hirsch. Dr. Forsy. Uh, any questions for? The commi, or the, the executive cabinet? Okay, need a motion, please?
I move to approve, um, so I'm gonna find it so I don't screw it up. The appointment of the Director of Curriculum of Instruction and Assessment, uh, for Dr. Angela Dilman.
Thank you, Mrs. Chavez.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Reen. All right, comments from the board and student rep?
Sure. Um, I just wanted to say that, like, Dr. Dilman was kind of, like, is the first impression for students who are stepping onto campus. And personally, like, as I assume the role of student rep, obviously, the board has been a tremendous help here. But at school, Dr. Dilman has been such like a leading inspiration to help me get more comfortable speaking and also just being a great leader. And I just want to say that the students will miss you very much, but we're very happy for you.
I will say, um, I remember when we met in, during the pandemic. And it was right after, um, Shirley and I were, was elected and wanted to get to know you a little bit better. So you were so great about giving a tour of, uh, well, not that I've never been to the high school, but. A revisiting tour of the high school and, uh, really enjoyed, yeah, getting to know you since then. Um, and I don't know if you remember, but I told you that, uh, I really thought that the high school was in good hands back then. Um, and, you know, I still stand by that. And I, I think you've done amazing things, um, with, uh, your tenure at the high school. And I know you will be very missed, but luckily, you, you're not going to be too far. And we're excited to see the great things you do in your next position.
Just say that I think, um, it will be exciting to see the next step in your career, having met you when you were ASB Director back at the high school. And I was a high school parent. Um, but we, I think, really look forward to the higher end of the elementary to secondary, uh, realm of expertise that you bring. Uh, and I think it will be a really great balance. And while we, of course, will miss Dr. Hacking, we're excited to see you step into that role.
All right. Can I get a vote, please? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Congratulations, Dr. Dilman.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the entire school board, Dr. Van Oostal and the executive team. I'm so unbelievably grateful for all of the opportunities I've had in Arcadia. And I'm really excited for this next role to support more than one school. I'm committed to working really hard and doing my very best. And I'm just, I'm, I'm really honored for this. Thank you so much.
Dr. Dilman, is there someone you wanted to introduce that came with you?
I definitely want to thank Kevin for putting up with the light of white.
Thank you for being here this evening.
I believe we, we would like to take pictures, is that right? Okay.
Okay.
All right, stay there, the high school team.
I, yeah.
Can I look at this? Yeah, sure. I took it out of my first, yeah, go ahead. Take a peek, take a peek, but I need it back. It was like. They helped me, it jogs me.
I wrote notes.
I know.
And I took it out when it was at the lecture hall.
That was me like last time. Oh, no, please do.
And then the guy comes up and he's like, there's your drink. And she's like.
But yes, it's true.
All right. Very exciting. But back to business. We are to information items. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, items removed from consent agenda. And we have no items removed from the consent agenda tonight. If, now we are to information items. Item A, report on Dana Middle School Board Learning Walk, Dr. Forsy.
Okay. Wonderful day, wonderful day. And I, I will be light, because I don't want to share. But, um, the one, the one thing I do want to share, which I think I shared on the, the walk, was, uh, what we saw in your presentation and what we saw in kind of what you shared. When you walked around campus and classrooms, you saw that lived out in classrooms. And that is really hard to do, right? There's a lot of variables on any given day, there's a lot. But you could clearly see that what you shared and what we were talking about was part of the culture, not just a one-day thing. And then one story I want to share about a student that I sat with, uh, when we did the, the talks with students, which thanks for doing that. Um, was a student who has been homeschooled, uh, K through sixth grade. And is now in seventh grade and came to Dana as a seventh grader. And I, when she shared that, I was like, I wonder what's gonna come next. You know, you've been homeschooled. And this student shared how she has friends, she loves the school, she's doing great academically. And that she's looking forward to going to Arcadia High School and just continuing her career. And I, I think I asked her three or four times, now, wait a minute, you were homeschooled since kindergarten? And then just came to Dana and all of this is, is, is working out and going well? And she was, she was thrilled. Um, and I think she's a very bright student. But again, I'll also say that is a, a school culture that plays a huge part in a student being able to do that. So thank you, um, for the day and thank you for all the, the small things you do that we never know about or see. I heard a testimony from a school board member for another school district, how when they reintroduced music program, they saw a huge positive spike in attendance. And again, that's testimony to, to, you know, how, how school should be fun. And it sounds like, you know, we have a solution to addressing the issue of attendance and it's right in front of us. We should enjoy school, our school should be fun. Like Dr. Forsy said, I appreciated the one-on-one student conversations, that's a great thing that you've done year after year. I had a couple of real good ones. One was a student that loved sports, she just loved sports, she's currently in volleyball, she talked about how she loved playing and she wants to explore other sports and that's really nice to hear. Had another student talk about how he's gonna start his own 3D printing business and he talked about how he's already developed a number of products and how he plans to market his business and I really love that entrepreneurial spirit. I'm not sure if we can take credit for that, but we can at least take credit for giving him room to explore. Great day. Thank you, Principal Long, thank you to your staff, very enjoyable visit, appreciate it.
All right, Lee.
Great. I try not to echo everything. It was a lot of fun to start with advisory period and it was great that the day was flipped on its head because often we see all the first period up to lunch classes and this time we got to see those that usually happen in the afternoon since it was flipped. The two words that really resonated for me when I thought about a theme for the whole thing, everything that I saw in advisory were preparation and support. It, while there were a lot of different advisory periods, they were all putting strategies and things in place to prepare our kids for the next step, like the high school transition The character Ed that was happening and the discussions among students and peers about really ethics, like what do you do in this situation? Is it bullying? Is it not? Why? And the strategies being taught and how to evaluate that, how to regulate your emotions when dealing with all of that. That was really exciting to see. The web, which I wish I could tell you what web stood for, but I'm blanking, I'm pulling the thing that, you know, I always complain about. At any rate, just again, students helping other students and so that was, that was amazing, but what I also very much appreciated the presentation about the, the journey around MTSS and the multi-tiered systems of support and how Dana sort of broke into quadrants to tackle some different thematic things this year. And I saw a lot of the relationship skills focus happening in not just the advisory periods, but the academic classes too. So that, that was really neat. It's always fun to talk to students in every class and I was in collaborative classes where there's more than one teacher happening and kids always seem to really appreciate that. A lot of peers working together and so it's great because you have an opportunity to just sort of insert yourself and say, hey, tell me about what you're doing in this class. And I always take this opportunity and I was asking kids all over Dana, hey, how's your experience been so far? Got to see Dr. Forsy's daughter who said he was following her around. But I said, you know, how's it going? And what would you share with an elementary student that is gonna be coming to Dana? What, what is it that you wish you would have known? And to a student, they said, I would tell them not to stress out. I was really worried about coming here and I was worried about making friends or I was worried I wouldn't be able to handle the workload or that the, the wheel of all the opportunities would be intimidating and it's not. It is, they, they welcome you, they prepare you and they support you. And so hearing that from students just shows all the things that are going right. And even though it was backward day, it was really nice to see how you guys are moving forward with the MTSS. And it's, it's just a really nice vibe, to use the vernacular, at Dana and, and you could feel that in talking to the students and the one-on-one students, discussions were, were fascinating. And I'll just end on, I got to see a monologue by a sixth-grade gentleman as a turtle. And the highlight of my morning was hearing a, you know, twelve, thirteen-year-old kid say, but alas, I have to cross the road. But getting to see the creativity and the respect that the audience of the classes are showing their classmates and just what a safe space is being created for kids to get up and put themselves out there. It's just really healthy and speaks a lot to the work that you're doing. So, thank you, thanks for the great visit, it's awesome.
Thanks, Lee. Jen?
Oh, my turn. So Dana is my child's homeschool, so I'm a little bit familiar with it, but I don't get to see it quite like I do on a learning walk, on a normal basis. I enjoyed the start with advisory, I went in and stalked my child and then left her alone for the rest of the time and then she asked me later, she said, why didn't you come and visit me in my other classes? So you never know what they want, right? But I appreciated learning about Character Strong and that effort in, at Dana. That was, that was new to me, maybe you've said it before, but I never, it didn't go through my, my skull. I enjoyed our visit. Dr. Warzakin took me to the Goles classroom, so I got to see Mrs. Talbot's classroom and the two aides in there and then the licensed clinical social worker, so that's the kind of stuff that, you know, just as a parent, I obviously don't see. And I got to see the, the students that were in there, they were having a great time. They were making quesadillas and orange juice as part of their science project, so that was nice. And then I actually got to see, I can't remember if it was before I went to the Goles classroom or afterwards, I got to see one of the students actually in Mrs. Jackson's art room and how in her art class she had, she also had the Goles student who, who was able to go on his own completely and he, and he was having a great time. And then some special ed students as well. So I loved that, you know, like people aren't kept separated, that, that it's working over there. What other classrooms did I go to? I went to Mrs. Fono's classroom, that was great. I got to see somebody being a waffle and when, I mean, you could tell that they had just started their monologues and he shot his hand up right away and I felt like that was great to be able to see the confidence that they have and they're not, you know, shy to, to participate. Got to go see Mrs. O'Brien's classroom, Mr. Sayer's classrooms, great teachers as usual. I enjoyed the student convos. What I noticed actually was, I think I spoke with three students, one of them who I've known since she was little, but I was surprised at how positive she was, even the kid that wasn't that positive, he was still positive. And I like how you don't select these students to be like something, you know, like to put you in the best light, it's just a cross-section of kids at the school. So that was good. I also enjoyed the, the fact that you were doing the themes every quarter and so that it doesn't get stale throughout the year with your focus on MTSS. Web is where everyone belongs.
That's right.
And then I actually stuck around for the house competition at lunch and that was fun, getting to watch that and I liked seeing the kids participate and get excited and watching ASB in action. And then the thing that I noticed was I had to wait around and as I was waiting around for the house competition to start, again, the no cell phones policy, the kids are really talking to each other and I just loved seeing them kind of relaxing and connecting. So that was, that was great. Thank you for having me.
All right. Thanks for pointing me out, but I was out of town. No, but I, I did want to just verbalize my disappointment, I was at the Axis Superintendent Symposium, so I was not able to be in attendance, but I'll have to make it up and visit, so thank you. All right, Travis, would you like to come up and close us out?
Yeah. Well, David, we felt you there for sure. You've been to all of our last ones.
I appreciate that, in spirit.
Yes, indeed. We had, we had fifteen people, I think, across the board and from the district office that came, so a ton of energy, we really felt it, so thank you all for supporting us and those of you who weren't able to make it, we did feel your love, so very much an awesome thing. Fenton, I think you nailed it for us, at least for Dr. Warzakin and myself, when it comes to what we want the kids at Dana to feel, which is like enjoying school regardless of their academic level, regardless of their background, we want them to have a fun experience there, an experience that they remember and feel good about every day. And the teachers that we have, the staff that we have, we're so lucky, I feel, both feel so fortunate to have teachers that really put them first and create that environment there, so it really is a testament to all of them. And my son also attends Dana and school's hard for him and I ask him all the time, how is school? And he says he really likes it. So to get a kid who I know struggles but still wants to go every day is a big thing, so I can take the pulse there, so. I want to put you on the spot too, because you helped, you helped plan the whole thing.
Yeah, for me, it's been a wonderful journey to be able to see the MTSS matrix that our teacher and our teams have come and built together to really implement it and it's really been a great journey to see that not only are the teachers who are part of the team, but also learning are really taking that on. So I really appreciate that and I'm glad that you were able to see how organically that's kind of come to life in our school. So thank you again, everyone, for visiting and, and for being there in spirit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Principal Long, Dr. Warzakin. Okay, so we are to item B, mid-year local control and accountability plan, LCAP update. Mr. Anderson.
Thanks. You guys want to do it because I'm used to it. So as we get started, you know, I think as, as much as, as the state and the county are trying to make this plan a compliance document, hopefully what, what you'll see is that we're doing our darndest so that it's not. And I, you know, just, just listening to the, to the, just the one school, right, that, that we talked about, I hope you'll see the goals, right, actually in action, that the things that we said we're gonna do, we're actually doing despite the state and the county. So, you know, as, as compliance goes, we are required to do a mid-year update now. We used to do it anyway, but now we're required to do it. Just to remind ourselves, we're now, we have to give outcome data on our metrics, we have to give expenditure data and implementation updates on all of those things. Basically, our metrics are either, they're, they're in progress or they're known and so we'll report out on, in that in the appendix. Also with our expenditures, that's all in the appendix, so I'm not gonna go over into detail tonight, but it's all there in the appendix, so if you have any questions about that. We're on track, we, we aligned our budget and we're on track to spending based on our first interim, so we don't see any real differences in that. We really do try our best to engage our, our educational partners in a lot of different ways. So we, we have, I know a couple of you are on our LCAP advisory that's gonna be meeting next week, so that's our sort of formal process, but we also do a lot of informal, we do surveys to people, we'll go out to schools and talk to students. The Board Learning Walks are also a, a place where we gather information and so we, we're always continually looking at where we are, where we want it to be and, and where we want to go. So we do have some things that are exciting, right? But this is the piece where, right, high-performing expert learners, right, is one of our goals, I use, you know, we see those, really making sure that we're engaged and connected and empowered. Multi-tiered systems of support and, and that's across attendance, social emotional learning, academics, right, that it's across all of those. And then having highly effective staff and then maintaining our fiscal integrity. So we are, every action is in progress, our budget's aligned and being expended as planned and we're seeing pockets of gains and losses across our, our metrics and, and that's something that we're, we're looking at more deeply. But some of the things that we're the most proud of is that, I know that, that we were really being held accountable for chronic absenteeism, our schools jumped in a thousand percent and every single one of our schools that were targeted are now out of the red. We increased by 1.4%, which is remarkable. Attendance gains are usually very incremental, so a 1% gain is, is outstanding, our grad rates are finding, even our socio-economically disadvantaged students, right, are performing really well with our graduation rates. Our GPAs are, are high and we, we're making targets for identified unduplicated populations and our students with disabilities. What we'll find though is that our standardized assessment scores, we have seen pockets, right? And, and I think part of that's important to remember that, that, that school needs to be fun too and, and so I think that our district has made a conscious choice not to make the standardized assessment, this high stakes, high pressure thing. We can do that, but I think that what our, our assessment scores are, they're real and they're still high. Like we're holding ourselves, when you look at compare ourselves to the state, we're blowing them out of the water. So our, our, our scores are still high and I think that we're just trying to, to dial it in. I think that we're seeing more Level One, so like our reclassification, our reclassification rate, it's, we're now having more Level One students and so I think because of the numbers, our reclass rate has come down a bit. We are now required to look at our LTALs, our long, long-term English learners and we found that that is our one, a group that is now in the red. Now that we're required, we've already been looking at them, Andrea and her team has, has really done a remarkable job and you'll see that in our LCAP when we report out of why we think that's occurring and what we're gonna do about it. And then again, our students with disabilities, they're, they're, they did better, but they're still performing at, at a lower rate than compared to our non-disabled peers. And I think that this is all a testament to all the hard work that's done at our schools and on our classrooms. Questions?
Any questions?
Cool. Okay, and we'll be back, we're, we're, you know, doing the heavy lift right now for the, the next cycle, so we, we will probably be adding a couple of actions based on the, the LTALs and maybe the students with disabilities. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Director Anderson. We are to Department Updates, Dr. Van Oostal.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. So this will serve as updates since our last board meeting for 360 of the district through our department leads, so we'll start with Business Services, Pierre Kessler.
Yes. Hello again. At a recent board meeting, I don't remember what I was talking about, but I started talking about developer fees and I went down a little rabbit hole, but just to give a little clarification, because we've now sort of landed on where we wanted to land, there was a Senate Bill, 937, that came out.
And we found that that is our one, a group that is now in the red. Now that we're required, we've already been looking at them. Andrea and her team has, has really done a remarkable job and you'll see that in our LCAP when we report out of why we think that's occurring and what we're gonna do about it. And then again, our students with disabilities, they're, they're, they're do, they did better but they're still performing at, at a lower rate than compared to our non-disabled peers. And I think that this is all a testament to all the hard work that's done at our schools and in our classrooms. Questions?
Any questions?
Cool. Okay, and we'll be back. We're, we're, you know, doing the heavy lift right now for the, the next cycle. So we, we will probably be adding a couple of actions based on the, the LTALs and maybe the students with disabilities. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. We are to department updates. Dr. Vrenos.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. So this will serve as updates since our last board meeting for three sixty of the district through our department leads. So we'll start with business services. Pierre Kessler.
Yes. Hello again. At a recent board meeting, I don't remember what I was talking about but I started talking about developer fees and I went down a little rabbit hole. But just to give a little clarification because we've now sort of landed on where we wanted to land. There was a senate bill, 937, that came out recently that went into effect on January 1st. And in the past, we've collected developer fees when somebody wants to expand the square footage of a home. We've collected those fees at the time of the city awarding them their permit. The idea being that with increased square footage, there's the, the likelihood that our schools would receive additional students and we need to have the facilities to accommodate those students. That's the purpose of developer fees. We recently, the board recently approved the developer fee justification study to increase our rates which we have the ability to do every two years. But anyway, so senate bill 937, the, the idea was to change the law so that government agencies, school districts would defer the receipt of that developer payment until the certificate of occupancy is issued. So not at the start of construction but at the end of construction. And not surprisingly, there was a lot of legal debate about this law. And so we sought legal counsel and we had an opinion written for us. And I won't go into the gory details but the conclusion is that we are going to continue to ask cities to have developers come to us and pay their developer fees at the time of the issuance of the permit at the beginning of construction. So no change in our process. We haven't seen a change in our process since January 1st until now. People are still coming in and paying their permit fees upfront. But we did send out letters to all the cities within our boundaries and the county as well, letting them know that we plan to continue collecting upfront. That's it. Thank you. Questions?
I do, no I do have a question. So if it's a senate bill and it's already, and it's already been approved, how can we not follow it?
So we could have a very long discussion. I literally had like a six-page, singles-based email from our attorney. The, the laws, the language in the laws contradict each other.
Okay.
So there's specific old ed code that says we're allowed to collect at the beginning of the process. This new law modifies more general government code. So the, the opinion that we got was that the broader government code does not supersede the more specific ed code that is, applies specifically to schools.
Okay.
And there were sort of options we can pursue. Having a board-approved facilities master plan helps us make that argument that we're allowed to collect upfront because that's one of the requirements in, in the new law which we're actually arguing we don't have to comply with. So it may change six months from now, a year from now, somebody may dispute this law. But in the meantime, we're gonna proceed with the same process that we've been doing.
These are the fees that if a developer who has paid in decides to not go forward with the project, they get reimbursed?
They do, yeah. They have a year from the time that they pay the, the fees to get those back, yes.
What, what would be the cons of changing our process?
In, in general, the, do you mean the pros of changing our process?
No, I can see the pros would be to comply with new wording in one area.
Oh, well, the cons of changing our process is that we would receive the funding at the end of construction which means that we have even less time to fund any sort of facilities projects that we would need to accommodate new students.
Okay.
In Arcadia, there are several large projects that are in process for construction like in and around Huntington and Santa Anita and there are hundreds of units. And so if we had to wait until those were ready for occupancy, we would never be able to have the time that we need to provide additional space if we decided that we needed to. I mean, you probably know we've talked a lot about how long things take with facilities and, and the division of state architect approval. We need years to really plan for additional space for some of these large construction projects. The other piece of it is the likelihood of getting paid is much less when it comes at the end. They, they can't get the permit and, and the city is a great partner with us on this. They will not issue the permit until they pay the district and so that really, that helps us. And that money goes right back into our facilities. We are currently putting up four, our plan is to put, have ready to go for the start of next school year, four new classrooms, modular classrooms. Sort of a, a short to midterm solution for our growing enrollment and growing TK. So if we had to wait until the end of these projects, like we wouldn't have those funds upfront to do this work. Yeah. And, and the, the attorney sort of gave us options, you know, comply or continue as is and we're, we're making the choice that we're making and we feel comfortable with it. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Right, moving on to educational services. Dr. Forsey.
All right, good evening. Thank you. As a reminder, we began the endeavor to start a program to clear our own people's administrative credentials, probably a year and a half ago or so, two years ago? Nine months ago, sorry. Felt like a year and a half ago. Andrea put a lot of work into that and really spearheaded that and very grateful for that. And tomorrow we'll be holding another meeting for three of our principals who are enrolled in that. And so it's a wonderful savings for our principals. It's probably anywhere between eight and twelve thousand dollars each to be able to do that. And it's also a wonderful time for us to be able to spend with our principals to talk about leadership, to talk about curriculum and, and some very specific things that they need to do to finish their credential. So that is being lived out and it will be lived out tomorrow. Very excited about that. We are currently also exploring the four approved dyslexia screening assessments that have been proved by the state. And so the state spent time looking at the dyslexia screeners that will be required. And they, they decided to approve four of them. It was a small group. It's much smaller than I think anyone anticipated. So we are continuing to assess those and again, that is for all students, K through two will be given the screener at least once in the school year unless a parent opts them out. To be clear, and this is the part that we will do our best to explain to parents, so you might hear this repetitively. The screener does not diagnose dyslexia but rather will inform us of students who may be at risk for reading difficulties. And so it is kind of a quandary to say we're doing a dyslexia screener and then tell, say, well, your student doesn't have dyslexia but they may have. So there will be a lot of explaining of that and a lot of communication around that. But as we begin that, you may, that's something you may begin to hear that parents are unsure about and it is kind of a quandary that we call the dyslexia screener but yet if we're concerned, it doesn't necessarily mean your student has dyslexia. We will be doing more of our, our LPAC testing tomorrow, get, or notifications for students to begin that end of year, year testing. And that is a very important test for our students, our English language students, English language learners as it plays an important role in the reclassification. And to piggyback a little bit on what Jim Anderson shared is those reclassifications take time. We do have some students that will go from an ELO level three and reclassify all the way out. That, that can happen. But I'm not aware of any that go from a ELO classification of one and then become, you know, ARFET or reclassified fluent English proficient. And so as we get more level one students or increasing numbers and percentages, our reclassification rate will decline just because those students will not have had time to work their way up to being reclassified as fluent English proficient. On Thursday, February 13th, we'll be holding a thinking maps training at Foothills Middle School where teachers from all three middle schools will learn about the eight thinking maps and how to apply them in their classroom. This is very exciting for us as thinking maps is very relevant and used in our elementary schools almost daily. And then it, you know, begins to peter off as you get into secondary and so very excited that our middle schools are opting into wanting more of that training so that, to reinforce that so that by the time students get to high school, that's just how they, that's just how they organize their writing. And then from JT, the after-school physical activity program pilot that was presented earlier this year will be expanding to, to six elementary schools beginning in March. And the attendance recovery program pilot is taking place at four elementary schools and one middle school right now and it's going very well. And that is my report for tonight.
I have a question. So what, I, I went up to the Capta Ledge Con at the beginning of last week and we met with Mike Fong's office and they mentioned that they had somebody from their, I'm sorry, this is not about something you asked but I think it's your, in your, in your area. They mentioned that they were reaching out to school districts to find out how many students were displaced into their areas. Are you aware if we've been reached out?
I'm not aware of any contact from anyone, yeah.
Okay.
Around the screening, that's sort of screening. Is that an unfunded mandate from the state? Like I remember meeting with Fortantino a few years back when he was talking about putting this forward. Is this the culmination of that?
Did we get, we got, we got a little bit of money, right?
We didn't because at the time he was talking about it, there was no money and I said, that sounds like a good idea but how do we?
I would say we got a little bit of money for PD and I would also say as this continues, that money won't, not like,
It, it's not.
Unless we get money every year for it because we'll have new teachers that we need to, to train. But we do have some money. Now, could be wrong and it might be funded in the budget every year but I don't, as of right now, I've not heard of that.
Okay, thank you.
Great question though, thank you Lee.
All right, moving on to human resource services. Dr. Horishin.
All right, well I only have an update for HR tonight and just wanted to remind you all that we have an IBB training scheduled for tomorrow and Thursday with our CSA partners. So both negotiations teams will be in this two-day training. These trainings were originally scheduled for January but due to the fires and the school closures, we had to work quickly to, to rebook the trainings. So they're happening this week. That's delayed launching negotiations with CSA a bit but we all felt very strong that we wanted to have this joint training together before launching into negotiations. The, the trainers are Richard Tower and Alan Rasmussen. We used them back in 2016 when we engaged in a joint training with CSA back then. So we're really excited to work with them again and, and spend the next two days in, in IBB. And that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Next up, we'll have Greg Gazanion with strategy and innovation and information and technology.
List just keeps getting longer. It's all good. I asked the technology team to start doing a spreadsheet of all the things they're working on and every day the list gets a little bit longer so I'm gonna have a lot to share with you in the coming weeks. But tonight I'll just keep it to one thing but it's a big thing. You know, there's been a lot of talk about tariffs lately and I'd like to think that we're immune from the effects of that but unfortunately we're not. In fact, with a lot of our technology purchases, those tariffs have the capacity to impact our cost. And one of our big purchases we do this time of year are Chromebooks. We run a four-year cycle for Chromebooks. We don't want to be one of those districts where you walk in and the technology's twenty years old. We want to make sure they're being responsible with our purchasing but we're also making sure students have technology that's appropriate for use in the classroom. Partnerships with our vendors are very important to us and because of this, we got a call from the vendor we work with often with our Chromebooks who said, hey, you really need to start thinking about this. Wherever we go with these tariffs, it could deeply impact both the cost of the Chromebooks you may buy this year and the inventory because people are rushing to buy them. So thanks to Scott, Technology and Business Services, we've been able to move quickly enough on this to avoid any impact from tariffs or inventory issues. So we're gonna be placing our, or we actually did place our order and we're gonna get those next round of Chromebooks into our district before impacting by that. So huge thanks to those departments and we'll certainly keep you up to date. As far as the Chromebooks, every year, we like to keep them consistent enough so they're not too different but ones that have meaningful upgrades. So the upgrades, or at least the new features this year, are actually going to make them easier to repair. Some of the connectors are gonna be stronger. Essentially they collect information at these Chromebook vendors every year about how to make these devices better. So this year it's specifically a focus on how can we do less repairs for the same amount of money. And that's something we're very excited to have as we do almost all of our own repairs in-house which get us different from other districts. So I'll keep it short tonight but really appreciative of our team for being able to move that quickly to save the district some money. Have you answered any questions, if there are any?
A four-year refresh? So we, we refresh all of our Chromebooks every four years?
No, it's phased. So we change out about a quarter of them each year.
Each year? And then the purchase that we, we bought, was it one year's worth or is it four years' worth or?
No, it's one year. So we certainly could be impacted next year with whatever happens. But yeah, we, we do about a quarter. Scott, am I saying that right? Yeah, we do about a quarter refresh each year of a four-year course. Yeah, great question.
And that's not just for staff, that's for students, that's for staff as well and our Chromeboxes in the classroom as well.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, all right. Next, Ryan Faran, Communications.
All right, another good sports season at the high school. We have three teams going to CIF this week. Girls soccer will be at Huntington Beach tomorrow, boys basketball at Palmdale tomorrow and then girls basketball will be at home on Thursday. Our latest edition of Imagine Magazine has just gone to print so hopefully that will be available in a few weeks. And tomorrow we're gonna send out a press release, more of an article about the impact of the fires in our community here in Arcadia Unified specifically, the community support, all the money raised and all that. So I encourage people to read that. It's a great story that we worked on with some insights from people that have lost everything in our district and their stories and some historical information as well. And the, the link to the fundraiser that's still open is in there as well. Tomorrow the high school's also having their career and internship expo which is always really cool. Eleven to three in the CTE building. They bring in all these professionals from all over the community. Every aspect of it and students get to go and talk to all these people, ask questions and it's just a really neat thing. We have our little internship table there but everyone's there and it's just, I think it's such a valuable opportunity for the students to go and chat with all these folks. If you haven't been to our district Facebook page lately, I was just there earlier scrolling, looking for something and it was just amazing the work of our interns and seeing all the different events from the luncheon PTA that happened today, the Lunar New Year celebrations, to the sports teams, the music. There's a steam night at Ball and Stalker, the contingent that went up to Sacramento and just seeing all the amazing things happening in our district and all the smiling faces and what kind of everyone's doing. It was just really cool to see all that captured and that our interns are doing an amazing job with their work and the quality of work. So if you haven't been there lately, I encourage you to see it because we can only be in one place at once but it's a, it's a nice capturing of kind of what's happening in the district that's very impressive by our students and staff. That's my report.
I just wanted to comment that I saw, I saw the photos of the Lunar New Year. Whoever was photographing that, those were amazing photos. Everybody looked great. So I don't know. Props to that intern.
I don't know who that was but.
I was hoping that one of me dancing wasn't so clear but.
We can, we can do some things. The quality is, the, the quality, we keep kind of pushing them a little bit and trying to get them more training and resources and the quality keeps getting better and better. So it is impressive to see. I was even, I hadn't been on our Facebook page in a few days and I was looking, I was like, gosh, some of the, and some of the videos they're doing and just the photos. I, I'm glad you noticed that because they are really getting better. So it's just great to see that.
Thank you. I did have a comment. I, at our PTA Founder's Day today, we were fortunate to hear from some of our student representatives that were talking about their time up at Ledge Conference and mentioning how much time and discussion with our elected officials was spent, talking about immigration policy, deportations, ICE activity. And, you know, anyone that's watching the news obviously sees a lot that's going on across the country. It's important to me that I, we continue to present and give our parents and our community a local context for, for, you know, how, how is that playing out here and what does that mean for us? I just wanted to share some information through conversations with our local police. We have continued to have that wonderful relationship with our Arcadia Police Department and being able to get accurate information. The first thing is that our relationship with our local police and all federal agencies and, and, you know, this goes back. We've, who knows, there's a, a lot of things that happen in schools that, that we get visited, not just by local police but sometimes federal agents from all kinds of brands. who know, uh, there's a, a lot of things that happen in schools that, that we get visited, not just by local police, but sometimes federal agents from all kinds of branches. And so that drive, the relationship there, when any law enforcement enters any of our schools, comes up to our schools. The driving, um, the driver of that relationship is first and foremost, and this is so important, is that our families, our students, know that our schools are safe, a safe place, and that they, um, view our, our schools as a safe place. Having said that, sometimes police activity or other agencies, it's not necessary to be done at the school. Schools are very convenient places, uh, for, for work to get done, because they know kids are there and if they need to, to question or whatever. We always ensure that, uh, that takes place when, when allowable, when not court ordered, that that takes place not at school and somewhere else. You know, that's something that's done at home, something that can be done somewhere else. So it's not, um, invading on, you know, our time and, and that, that safety that's perceived by our students and, and our staff. There are times when, um, there is court ordered and it's law that, um, state agencies, law enforcement have the right to question a student or a parent at school. And when that happens, we do it, um, in the, the most precautionary, safe place in a classroom and a, and a, somewhere. Police, local police, uh, law, any kind of law enforcement would never go beyond the offices of our school sites. I want to be very clear that, that doesn't ever happen. They don't go beyond our offices where they're gonna be going into our hallways and into our classrooms. Questioning kids, that just would not happen. And so, uh, I just want to be very clear about that. Um, and, and, you know, uh, through my conversations, uh, with our police chief, he made it very clear too, that we've had zero inquiries in, uh, Arcadia. And, and that's not just our schools, but in our, for our community. He was very confident and let me know that, uh, when there would be any inquiries from ICE, that it would come through our local police. So they, there would be a coordinated effort where they would know ahead of time and we would know that and be able to manage that and, and do exactly what I said. Where we would show up at a site or myself, one of our executive team always go out to the site and we manage that. It's not placed on the local school, you know, to do, to do that. And so that was, that was comforting to know, um, and just, uh, good to know at this time, kind of contextually where, where we as Arcadia. Um, so wanted to share that. I'll take any questions if you have any on that.
I'll just, uh, wanted to say thank you for addressing it. Um, I have gotten a couple of questions from the community around that issue of what happens if or how or when. And so thank you for, like, it's sort of like an elephant in the room, I think, for some people. So thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, all the folks at the sites, they would, uh, so they, they understand the, I don't know what's called the plan, but, um, the procedures, I suppose, like, they would, they would never have to coordinate that, that just, uh, that just-
That's, that's correct. And, and, uh, that is a plan that's always been in place.
That's a process.
Yes. And, and, you know, that, that happens sometimes when we have domestic issues going on and police come out to the site. And we will get a call immediately and, uh, we will go out from district office and we will manage that so that the, you know, principals, the staff continue to focus on teaching and learning while we're dealing with that. So, yeah. Yep. That concludes our reports. Thank you, Mr. President.
I have, I have a question for you.
Oh, sorry.
Um, oh, that's okay. Um, uh, we, we kind of talked about this, but I thought it would be useful for, uh, for, for everyone to hear. There are, I have, I have received some concerns about people being afraid to go to school. Um, can you just speak to, to anything? Like, how you're dealing with that, if, if that's a problem?
Yeah. You know, we, we, well, first of all, it's been very few. I mean, we've had just a handful of inquiries. Um, but, uh, where that happened, it was, um, from a parent, uh, I know a couple that, uh, were, were fearful of sending their kid to school. Uh, after hearing some of these stories, uh, on a national scale. And, uh, we were able to reach out and talk to them. Um, explain contextually what's happening in Arcadia and that our, our, our sites are safe. And, uh, and, you know, that was, that was what they needed and they were able to send them back to school. So I, I feel like, you know, that communication, and if you hear that, uh, that's why I'm sharing it tonight, because I, hopefully that message gets out. And of course, anyone that, that is feeling that is, should, should call and reach out. So.
And, and we're, and what, I guess my point there is that we're proactively, like, when, when kids don't show up for some reason, we, we call and find out why and we try to address every problem.
Thank you for that. I, you know, one of the things about attendance, and this goes back to the, you know, uh, how we have dialed in the attendance. Um, is that, you know, uh, in the old days, kids could maybe go five, 10 days and, and, you know, uh, finally someone's like, you know, man, we ought to give them a call, you know? We know now that instantly when a kid misses school, there is an outreach from the school site to find out, you know, what's going on, where are they? And that's when, uh, a couple of those came up. And so, um, you know, it's just part of our outreach. But also, um, sometimes reveals things that we can, um, you know, find a solution for or help the parent work through so that we can get the kid back in school. So, yeah. That, that attendance work is, is, pays off in many ways, right? Not just getting kids in, uh, but also, you know, solving, uh, things that are happening at home. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Venosdal. Okay, we are at consent items. Can I get a motion for the consent items, please?
I move to approve consent items A through F.
Motion's made by Mrs. Chavez.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Yee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, we are to comments of the board. Mrs. Yee, would you like to start?
Sure. So, uh, first of all, thank you for that El Cap presentation. Um, it is always a lot of work and I know that there's a lot of people. Smendoza was one of them. I put a lot of effort into that and I'm looking forward to the final presentation coming up later. David Lee and I attended the Arcadia Chamber of Commerce ACE Awards. And, uh, it was great to see all the winners and one of the winners was Downtown Arcadia, which, um, I have little. We brought some stickers back for everyone. I didn't have a chance to pass them out, but I'll, I will, or I'll just, if anybody wants one, take one. Um, but anyway, I just want to congratulate them. They've done so much work for our city and our schools. And it's always been a great partnership, including the Fire Relief Fund that we've, um, been working with them in AEF. And so just a congratula-, a big congratulations to them. To date, they've raised, you know, we've raised a hundred thousand dollars and hopefully a little bit more by the end of the month. So, um, if you haven't donated, please, uh, go to the AEF website and there's a link. And, um, a hundred percent of the proceeds will go to all the families affected by the fires. So thank you again to everybody who's worked on that. And I know everyone else will be going through this, but also, uh, many of us attended the Arcadia High School Chinese Boosters, Chinese Parents Boosters Annual Lunar New Year Fest Gala on Sunday. As always, it's a really fun event. Um, a lot of great performances from our students. So just a shout out to the Parent Booster Club for all the hard work. It's a huge endeavor. And, um, and thank you to them also for, um, making that gala another fundraiser for, um, the high school. Um, teachers and staff that have also been affected by the fires. And as David mentioned, a lot of us were up on the stage. Dancing to a dance that was not the dance that we learned, just FYI. But we made it work and hopefully there are not more photos and videos of all of us out there. And then last but not least, um, today, we all, I think all of us were there. Yes, except for Raymond, who was teaching. But yes, yes, we were all at the Arcadia Council PTA, um, Founder's Day and Honorary Service Awards. And just another congratulations to, um, our AUSD Maintenance Team, who is just an amazing part of our community. And we really do appreciate everything they do. Um, and also Salem, um, okay, I'm blanking on his last name, Salem Long for his award as well, as President of AEF and all the work that he has done to, uh, just continue AEF's, uh, mission of helping, um, AUSD. So other than that, have a great President's Day, everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Yee. Let's go to Ms. Fan.
Um, I wanted to say once again, congratulations to Dr. Hacking for retirement. Uh, my parents are very jealous. Also to Dr. Dilmond for assuming that position. Um, I also was able to go to the Chinese Booster Club's gala for the first time in all four years. And I was glad to see, like, Mr. Eng show off Kung Fu again, which is always amazing to see. Um, and I'm sorry to bring this up again, but I really enjoyed the dance. And somehow I also ended up dancing on the stage, which was not prompted, but SMW had a great time. And also I was really glad that Dr. Venosdal brought up, um, some, uh, like, recent concerns with, like, immigration. And because I was very, very, like, grateful to see, like, so many of my peers be able to go up to Sacramento. Um, recently, like, Constitution Team also went up to Sacramento to compete. And when, like, so many of these people gather and just talk about the Constitution, I'm reminded of how important civic education is for students, but just everyone. Uh, it can be as simple as just reading the news and keeping up or having students and giving this community the resources to, to be able to process all the, like, complicated laws. Because I've had to, like, read some of them for GovTeam and it's not been very fun. But to able, to, to be able to break that down is incredibly important and I'm glad that our district is making that a priority.
Thank you, Ms. Fan. Well said. Mrs. Vargo, Vargo?
Uh, I was also at the, uh, Council PTA Luncheon, enjoyed that. Uh, thank you to the PTA for putting on that community event, uh, honoring the founders of PTA. Um, and people within our community that are making a difference. Um, I enjoyed seeing you, Ms. Fan, at the Chinese Parents Booster Club event. And, uh, another thing that, uh, that Fenton and I, I'll let you talk about it too. We, we judged the Lions Club Speaker Contest, yeah, competition. There were four, four, um, speakers and they spoke on AI, friend or foe. They were very impressive. Uh, enjoyed that and I got to meet Mr. Garrett. Yeah. Uh, uh, I mean, he's apparently been in the district for thirty, not-
Legend.
A volunteer in the district for 30 years, but my first time meeting him, so that was great. And, um, what else did, let's see, what else have we been? Oh, Ledge Con was great. Um, there were 11 of us. I know that you guys already got the report at the, um, Council PTA meeting tonight. But I appreciate, I've, I don't know if there were other school board members, but I think I was the only one that stood up when they said, you know, are any school board members in this room? And there were a hundred and fifty people there. Um, so I appreciate that our school district puts, uh, uh, resources into sending us and, and an administrator. Um, uh, Dr. Munoz was there. Yeah, Dr. Munoz was there. Um, and then many parents, uh, two students. Um, it was great. We got to, uh, to hear from a lot of legislators. Um, and what did I want to say about that? I'm not sure if there was something specific I wanted to say, but, you know, uh, oh, Al Meret Succi is going to be putting up another, um, Raise the Base Bill. So hopefully, I, that's why I was thinking, um, if we can come, get in contact or, being in contact with, um, Mike Fong's office doesn't hurt. And letting him know, you know, you know, what's going on with us. Um, I have a name for you if you'd like me to share that. And Sasha Rene Perez, who is our new Senator, um, she is the Chair of the Education Committee on the Senate side. So we have a lot of support for education in the San Gabriel Valley. And I think if we can, um, continue our efforts to, um, get Sacramento to see, uh, how important it is to continue to, to fund education, it, it, it's a great thing. And then, what did I want to say? I think that was about it. Um, so, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Vargo. Mr. Eng?
Enter a number of community events, um, mostly hosted by people that are very important to us, partners that make, um, part of the fabric of this great school district of ours. Downtown Arcadia, at the Lunar New Year Festival, I attended it and, and performed. It was a very good event. Especially since it's going to funds, it's going to help fund, uh, the needs for those that have been affected by the fires. Tended Lions Club Speakers Competition. It's, it's great. I've been going for, as a judge, for quite a number of years and it's a great event. Lions Club has been very supportive of us for many years. The Arcadia High School Char-, Chinese Parents Booster Club Lunar New Year Celebration, and of course, we attended and I performed. Another organization that, that does great things for us. And of course, uh, today we went to the Founder's Day, uh, PTA Celebration. It looks like, uh, PTA continues to be healthy, vibrant, and that's really, uh, a key component to, to our success. And PTA, it's good to see. That's glad.
All right, Mrs. Chavez.
I know it is award season. It's not just like the Oscars. It's the ACE Awards and honorary service awards. But it, it was great to see both AEF and Downtown Arcadia recognized in those respective places, since they came together to support AUSD and our families. And yeah, huge congrats to our Maintenance Department for being recognized. Uh, I think, you know, so often their work is just behind the scenes, because things work. And so, um, it, it was nice to see them in the spotlight. Uh, I just want to do a quick shout out to our Oversight Committees, uh, because that is a vital part of the work that is done here. And it's, uh, being fiscally responsible and working with taxpayer dollars is one of the core responsibilities of school board. And that oversight piece is really important to making sure that we are spot on in how we use those funds. So thank you to everyone who serves there and for the reports. I did, uh, attend the chamber meeting this morning with Dr. Venosdal. And so just a couple of really quick updates. Hospital says flu is again on the rise. So, uh, wash your hands, wear masks, and if you haven't had your flu shot, I think now's the time. Uh, the update from the Arboretum post, uh, windstorm and fires was, uh, they did lose 40 trees and had 300-plus trees with branches down and dangling. So that is why they were close to the public for the big cleanup. But they did host a day camp, one of several in the, uh, LA area, uh, for children of families displaced by the fires. And so they were able to serve the community in that way. And the Arcadia Chamber has also leaned in to support businesses affected by the fire. And they provide, are providing free office space or just place to come charge or pick up office supplies for free that are being donated to businesses that lost their buildings or have had to be evacuated. So a lot of that has, is, you know, Altadena, Pasadena area, but the Chamber has opened its doors to those folks. So, uh, again, it's just another great example of our community coming together to support those in need. And, uh, go, uh, athletic teams this week. That's very exciting. CIF is a big step. Um, so we'll see how we do. And the next, uh, Athletic Boosters meeting is next week. So I will bring back updates from that.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Chavez. I concur. And th- thank you to all the Measure A and Measure I Committees, uh, for minding all of our taxpayer monies. Congrats again to Dr. Dilmond on her appointment. Of course, congrats to Dr. Hacking for his upcoming retirement, although I, he's, he's, uh, he's still stuck with us for a few more months, or, or are we stuck with you? I'm not sure. Principal Long, uh, I'm, I'm sorry I missed the, the learning walk. I, I do have, um, spring break coming up, which is, actually falls on a different spring break than the district. So I will try to make it over at that time and, um, check out all the great things that are happening at Dina. A quick congrats and thank you to, again, Downtown Arcadia and, uh, AEF for the fundraiser at the Lunar New Year Fair. Kudos to Lauren- kudos to Lauren for, uh, staffing and coordinating the booth, uh, that was there. I think you were there for the whole day, so really appreciate that, and I know we, we all got to talk to a lot of different people and, um, all the people staffing the booth, so appreciate all of that hard work. And lastly, uh, yeah, the HS Chinese Booster Club Dinner for Lunar New Year. I actually had a conflict, and I couldn't go, so I sent my, my twin brother, who went, uh, up on the stage, so it wasn't me, actually. But I heard it was a great, a great event, and it was a, a good dance, but
plausible deniability.
Just kidding, but it was great. Thank you for, uh, the, the Booster Club. Did an amazing job as always. I, I can't believe, like, there's actually not too many of them that work on the, the whole event, and it seems like there's dozens and dozens, but the real core group, and they do an amazing job every single year, and this was no exception, so, uh, kudos and congrats to them. And, Dr. Venosdal, bring us on.
Thank you. I also want to congratulate Salem and, uh, Rudy and our Maintenance Department for their well-deserved, um, recognition from PTA, and I always, uh, share with people, especially our, our staff internally, um, you know, what that means and how important that is when, um, our, our clients, uh, the people we, we serve, um, our parents recognize, um, the work that you do. And, uh, I'm fortunate I get to sit on the Nominating Committee, and, and my role as always is, is more guidance. I, I, you know, don't go in saying, eh, you know? So I usually sit back, and, um, the story that was told, the, the first, uh, person that spoke, uh, was about coming back to school, um, after the windstorm, and, uh, the mom shared that, uh, you know, on the way, there's, there's all the debris, you know, still on the sides of the roads that had been cleaned up. There's trees that are still down, you know, different places, and yet pulls up at the school, walks her child in, and it's just immaculate. Like, the campus looks like it's, you know, open house. Uh, there's just nothing, any, you know, and, uh, it was just that recognition that, you know, there's, there's pride. There's, there's pride, um, in the custodians, there's pride in the Maintenance Department, um, and all of the repairs that, that were done, and so, uh, that's just, that's, uh, it means a lot coming from them, so. Well deserved, and I'm looking forward to celebrating with, with all of the Maintenance Department. Uh, thank you, Mr. Anderson, uh, for your, I, I know it's a mid-year, and it's just kind of, we're working on it. A lot of the data's in progress, and we'll look forward to the big report. Um, but I just want to say again, thank you for your opening line, which is, uh, we don't view our LCAP as a checklist or a compliance piece. We made that decision many, many years ago, when it first came out, and we said, you know, we're, we're gonna make this an actionable, uh, document, a living document that's not gonna sit on a shelf. It's gonna reflect who we are and what we do, and we've continued to live up to that, and so, thank you, and I know it's a whole team, but thank you for your leadership on that. Um, and then I just want to, uh, congratulate Dr. Dillman. Uh, it's, it's really rewarding, uh, and exciting, uh, as a leader to, to grow leaders, um, from within, and, uh, you know, it's something that we're committed to in Arcadia, is investing, um, in our staff and, and being able to, to give those resources and the mentorship to, um, grow folks, and, uh, you know, I, I had that moment, and we missed a, a opportunity, Brett, because we have three high school principals for the last twenty years that were in this room at one time. Twenty years, I know.
Should we keep on your back?
But, you know, when I went over, I'll just, I want to share, when I went over to speak with the staff, which, you know, it's not easy. It's gonna speak to the high school staff saying, we're taking your principal. Um, but what I shared was, uh, you know, we, we value consistency and stability in, in Arcadia. We understand that a stable and consistent and predictable environment is where kids and staff thrive. And, you know, this playbook, so to speak, of being able to grow our own, to have them come in, be a principal, uh, and then, or at any level, and continue up and continue to do a new role, grow into that new role, but at the same time, continue to be a support for the role, for the position they came from, um, is, is just a support that a lot of people don't get the luxury of having, and uh, I'm really excited, uh, for Angie, and I also shared, and I'll share now, that, uh, it makes me anxious. It does. It's a big job. It's a, and it's, it's a big school, um, and, and we need the right leader, and I trust process, and if anything I've learned over the years, we have really good processes in Arcadia. It's a very inclusive process, right? And, uh, and we'll have all the right people from all the different, you know, represents from all the different groups, uh, at the table, interviewing, and, uh, I am looking forward to, um, meeting that person that's gonna step into those big shoes and take it to the next level, so I'm looking forward to that progress. That's it. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Venosdal. And that is our meeting, so I will adjourn the meeting tonight at eight forty-one. Everyone, please have a relaxing and rest